Being seven o'clock, we call the common council meeting to order. Please stand for.
Motion to the House, United States of America, two Republicans. Stand as one nation under God. Yeah, they're ready for a liberty justice.
The third rule has been taken, correct?
Correct.
Move on to adoption of the agenda.
Would you approve the agenda as print?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington. Any additions or corrections to it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to approval of June 8th, 2021 minutes. We get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Dorsey for approval of the June 8th, 2021 minutes. Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization to pay bills, Mr. Dorsey.
Your Honor, our authorization to pay bills in the amount of $672,817.15.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pay the bills in the amount of $672,817.15. Any additions or corrections to that? Please cast your ballots.
Who had the second on that one? Was it Roberts or Herter?
Motion carried by all. Public comment? Public comment? No public comment? Hearing none, we will move on. Standing in special committees, we'll start off with the Board of Public Works. Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Works met on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2021, 4:30 p.m. Public comment relative to items on the agenda, there was none present. Waste water treatment plan update, there are no questions on treatment plan update. Next item was to authorize the purchase of a replacement truck with winch. During some maintenance, during some regular maintenance, staff recently discovered major issues with the bumper crane that the wastewater treatment plant uses to pull equipment from the lift stations. And Gruel reached out to several times to the manufacturer for replacement parts with no response. Since replacements parts cannot be obtained, been searched for a replacement crane, but quickly found that a new crane would not be recommended for installation on the current pickup truck, as a larger truck would be needed to support the crane. Three coats were obtained for a three-quarter ton truck with a new crane mounted by Monroe Truck Equipment. Mr. Gruel ordered, recommended ordering a truck from Prague, New London. The amount of $66,534 that will be brought to council, I believe, tonight. Next item we had was to review and recommend the resolution adopting the Opaquah County All Hazards Mitigation Program. Opaquah County Emergency Management applied and received a grant to help mitigate vulnerabilities in the county. To be a part of the planning effort and any future funding opportunities, municipalities need to adopt the resolution to be eligible for further mitigation projects. Adopting this resolution at this time would not commit the city to any cost, but allows the city to be part of any future projects. Motion made and seconded to consider it. Motion carried, and it'll be brought to council tonight. The director's memo was included and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversary report. Devin, just need. Street operator completed six years of service, June 10th. Ben Gruel, wastewater treatment plant lead operator, completed 21 years, July 30th. Future items. Future wastewater treatment plant tour for all new alter persons. Next thing, discuss and confirm next meeting date. The next Board of Public Works will be held August 2nd, 2021, at 4:30. No further business, motion made and seconded to adjourn, meeting adjourned at 4:30. I'm moved to bring to council tonight the second reading of an ordinance to designate new stop sign locations. These are mainly on Nassau Street at Law, Nassau Street at Millard, Nassau Street at Cameron, Nassau Street at Roland, Nassau Street at Laura, and the west termination of Henry Street into Northwood Village. Basically, what we're trying to do is eliminate intersections that have no control over it.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog. For ordinance to designate new stop sign locations, second reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
The next I move to consider a resolution adopting the Opaquah County All Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to consider resolution adopting the Opaquah County All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
And that is all I have to bring to council tonight.
Thank you. Motion carried, 10-0. Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Move on to finance personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Personnel Committee met Wednesday, July 7th, at 4:30. Members present, Dorsey, Fachey, Barrington, Roberts, and Beesaw. Also present, Mayor Mark Herter, alter person Billy Olson, alter person Bernie Ritchie, City Administrator Chad Horst, Finance Director Judy Radke, City Clerk Nicole Lemke, Appraiser Adam Servie, Auditor Casey Saltz, and Payroll and HR Coordinator Jill Moss. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Dorsey. Motion made by Barrington and seconded by Roberts to approve the agenda. City Clerk Nicole Lemke presented an amendment to Chapter 12 of the Municipal Code to reflect state general licensing requirements and to allow for refunds of licensing fees in the event of a business sale for the first six months. Motion was made by Beesaw, seconded by Roberts to recommend to council approval of the amendment to Chapter 12 of the Municipal Code and refunds in the first six months in the event of a business sale, carried 8-0. Adam Servie, City Real Estate Appraiser, talked about the assessment process. He explained the revaluation process, major class, comparison report, statement of assessment reports, and he assessed sales ratio analysis. He also indicated 2025 as the estimation year for the next citywide revaluation. Adam also provided the committee with Property Assessment Guide for Municipal Officials, published by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. The committee thanked Adam for the information. The 2020 year-end audit was presented via Zoom by Casey Schmitz, CPA Supervisor, Johnson Block and Company. Ms. Schmitz and City Finance Director Radke responded to questions. Upon completion of the questions on the 2020 audit, the committee thanked Ms. Schmitz and Finance Director Radke and accepted the audit. City Administrator Chad Horst led the committee through the changes of the video producer's job description. A motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Roberts to recommend to council approval of the video producer job description, carried 8-0. There was general discussion on retaining the wheel tax. The revenue and anticipated projects were presented. Motion was made by Roberts to recommend to council to abolish the wheel tax. The motion did not get a second. Finance Director Radke provided information on the American Rescue Plan Act. The city received the first half of the American Rescue Plan funding from the state of Wisconsin on June 25th. Mr. Radke went through a list of eligible uses and also the restrictions of the funds. The city has three years to decide how to utilize this funding. A capital projects meeting has been set to begin discussion on the alternate uses of the funds and prioritize needs on August 4th, immediately following the Finance Committee Finance Director Radke reviewed the monthly financial reports. Finance Director's report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, a motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Beesaw to adjourn at 6:20, carried 8-0. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in council chambers on August 4th at 4:30. I will bring to council the approval of the license list.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Herter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question? On the licenses, was the, uh, our neighbor across the street, has that building been inspected by the fire and the police department to make sure it's up to code? Because I understand there's been some problems.
A license has not been issued to Easy Street.
Their license has not been issued?
Has not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and seconded by Mr. Herter to approve the license list. All, or, uh, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, 10-0.
And I consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington to consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading. Any further discussion?
Which, which ordinance?
The next one.
Refunding licensing fees for sale of a business.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, 10-0.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 12 of the Municipal Code to reflect the state's general licensing requirements and allow for refunds of licensing fees in the event of a business's sale.
In the first.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Herter for ordinance to amend Chapter 12 of the Municipal Code to reflect state general licensing requirements and to allow for refunds of licensing fees in the event of a business sale.
Do we have to add four, six months on it? Or is that efficient?
It should be okay, because the ordinance will be as written in the packet.
Okay.
State, correct. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And the approval of the video producer's job description.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington for approval of the video producer job description. Any further discussion? Again, please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Moving on to park and recreation, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Park and Rec Committee met on Tuesday, July 6th. Committee members present were Beesaw, Fachey, Groot, Ritchie, Zog, and Baker. Council members present were Mayor Herter, Billy Olson, Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, and Dennis Herter. Others present were Chad Hirth, Michelle Lambrecht, Ginger Arnt, Chris Kringle, Chad Mix, and Chris Reisman. The meeting was called to order at 4:51. Motion was made by Fachey and seconded by Zog, moved to approve the agenda. Motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Discuss, discussion of baseball and softball diamond usage. Committee members discussed complaints and concerns relating to some conflicts from several youth groups booking and utilizing baseball and softball diamonds. The committee directed staff to set up a time with the users to discuss the conflicts and possible resolutions. No motion was made at this time. Approve a trail extension easement behind the waters. An easement extension agreement for the pedestrian trail behind the Water Supper Club was presented. The current easement to expire on August 9th, 2021, and the extension agreement would renew the easement for another 10 years. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Fachey, moved to approve the trail agreement with the Water Supper Club, extending the easement for 10-year period to August 9th, 2031. Motion was carried by all. That'll be brought to council for your consideration. Discuss on maintenance and/or replacement of the Hatton Park Wall. Mayor Herter laid a discussion on the comments receiving regarding the condition of the Hatton Park Wall. Committee members reviewed estimates presented in 2018 on repair and replacement options. It was agreed that the wall is historical and very important to the community and should not be removed, but questioned how to finance the costs when other priorities need funding. Committee members suggested having a public meeting, asking the citizens of London to share their feedback on how to finance the preservation of the wall. Staff will look at having this public meeting scheduled during the September committee meeting. No motion is made on this item. July is Park and Rec Month. Chad Hirth recommended, reminded the committee that July is Park and Recreation Month and to take advantage of the great facilities and recreations activities the city provides. No motion was made on this item. Director's report and memo, Director's Report Memo was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Chairman's report, there was none presented. Committee members' report, there was none presented. Future agenda items, discussion on a mountain bike park, sculpture art at River Trail Park, public forum on Hatton Park Wall, and future park tour. Discuss next month's meeting date, Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, at 4:45. There being no further discussion, motion made by Zog and seconded by Ritchie, moved to adjourn at 5:55. I would ask the council to approve the trail extension easement behind the waters.
Second. Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog to approve the trail agreement with the Water Supper Club, extending the easement for a 10-year period to August 9th, 2031. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, 10-0.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Move on to Planning Commission, and Mr. Beesaw, you're up.
Okay, the Planning Commission met on Thursday, June 30th. Excuse me. Those in attendance were Beesaw, Basset, Bass, Gabbert, Mayor Mark Herter, Suzy Steingraber, and Jamie Walbrook. Others in attendance, City Administrator Chad Harth, Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator Dave Vincent, Billy Olson, Tim Roberts, Mindy and Warren Pesky, Spencer Young, Laurie Schneider, Eric Foul, Ken Chawersky, representing Cedar Corp., Susan Paulson, and Spencer Young representing the Wolf River Art League. The meeting was called to order at 5:00. A motion was made by Gabbert to adopt the agenda, seconded by Basset, carried by all. May 20th, 2021 minutes were reviewed and approved by Basset, seconded by Steingraber, carried by all. A request to the commission was made for a mural by the Wolf River Art League at 1111 North Shawno Street, Anytime Fitness. There was discussion on the definition of a mural and if the proposed drawing for the first installment to the building might be considered advertising. Dave Vincent will reach out to the city attorney for a opinion. Some other options were discussed, and the artist agreed to create a wildlife-themed piece for approval. The plan is to change the art on this building monthly as weather permits, and to have the artwork, murals, approved the preceding month before the change occurs. Young shared some information on his activities with many celebrities in the Green Bay Packer wall at Lambeau Field that he has done for the past few years. The Wolf River Art League is excited about what Young brings to the table for the art league and for the city of New London, with a lot of his work being viewed and followed on a national stage. There were three separate fencing proposals for consideration in the front yards of three residential properties that required Planning Commission approval. The first property is 115 Laurel Street. Two options were presented. Option two was approved with a motion from Mayor Herter and seconded by Gabbert. The motion carried by, carried with two dissensions, Walbrook and Roberts. The second property at 313 Cook Street, the fence proposal was approved with a motion from Basset and seconded by Gabbert, carried by all. A third property is 1939 Southland Lane. The fence proposal was approved with a motion from Walbrook and a seconded by Bass, was carried by all. Cedar Corporation was introduced and provided a lengthy discussion with updates, information that was compiled with feedback from the commission participations. The commission is to move forward with providing a future land use map. A review of future agenda items are discussed. The next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 22nd, at 5:00. A motion was made by Steingraber, seconded by Mayor Herter, carried by all. Meeting was adjourned at 7:01. I would like the approval of the ordinance amending the city of New London's Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan, CPA dash 01 dash 21, second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Herter for ordinance amending the city's New London's Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan, CPA dash 01 dash 21, for second reading. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
I'd like the council's consideration for an ordinance rezoning property at 815 West Beckett Road from R1 to R4 to be the second reading.
Second.
Got a motion and seconded by Mr. Fachey. For the ordinance rezoning property at 815 West Beckett Road from R1 to R4, this will be a second reading as well. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And I'd like the council to consider ordinance amending the city of New London's Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan, CPA dash 02 dash 21. This is a second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Barrington for ordinance amending the city of New London's Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan, CPA dash 02 dash 21. This is also second reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, 10-0.
I'd like council's approval for an ordinance rezoning property at Northwest Corner of House Road in County S from MP to R4A. This is also the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Dorsey for ordinance rezoning property at Northwest Corner of House Road in Highway S from MP to R4A. Second reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, 10-0.
Got to get the three fence. Do we need defense ones, Chad?
Nope, fence ones are staff planning committee.
Okay, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Move on to economic development. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Economic Development Committee meeting met on Tuesday, June 29th. Members present were Dorsey, Bishop, Fachey, Kapitski, Lathrop, Olson, Thompson, Wolf, and Zog. Others present were Mayor Herter, Tim Roberts, Bob Beesaw, City Administrator Chad Horst, Emily Kling, Scott Black, and Jeff Hanskey. Meeting was called to order at 4:30. Kapitski and Fachey approved the agenda. The May 25th, 2021 meeting minutes were reviewed and approved by Zog, Bishop, carried by all. Kapitski introduced Emily Kling, who recently assisted the chamber with a data collection project, creating a spreadsheet of all residential and commercial businesses in the city. The chamber has a listing of the chamber members, however, it did not have contact information for non-chamber members. Emily's efforts included reaching out to those non-chamber members by phone, email, or even going door-to-door to gather contact info for each business in the city. Emily also completed research on how businesses positively influence the community and vacancies financially affect the city. She used the information to create a report and submit a statewide, submitted it to a statewide competition sponsored by DECA. Emily took second place for her efforts. Emily's information also assisted the downtown revitalization committee in applying for and being awarded a membership in the Wisconsin Connect Communities Program. The committee thanked and congratulated Emily for her research and her efforts. New London School District Administrator Scott Black was present and provided information of some new digital marketing efforts the school district is planning. The district is hiring Spectrum to begin an advertising campaign to primarily focus on promoting the school district as a great choice for open enrollment. Spectrum will be using Google's AdWords platform to specifically target potential customers who fit their profile. The school district invited the city and the chamber to consider being partners in this advertising relationship, as all three entities could benefit from expanded exposure. The committee discussed pros and cons from this type of advertising, stating that it may be hard to justify the return on the investment versus the benefits of constantly marking the city, similar to the example given of regular Wisconsin Dell ads that promote the entire Dell's community. Horst will invite a rep from Spectrum to a future meeting for a presentation on their services, and the committee will evaluate the results of the school district's advertising efforts before making the decision if this type of advertising investment would be beneficial to the city. At the committee's last meeting, Dave Field and Bill Zeiner provided information on the upcoming plans for Opaquah County Marketing Co-op Program. The first phase of the marketing program focused on Opaquah County tourism. Now the program is evolving to target residential recruitment and workforce development. In previous years, the co-op contribution was financed from the New London Tourism Commission, however, the new focus does not line up with Tourism Commission's goals. To beginning, to continue to be part of the co-op, Horst recommended that Economic Development Committee finance the $3,000 contribution for the city. Concerns were voiced, questioning if the program was a benefit to the city versus supporting a program where the contribution is pooled with money from other municipalities and the county for a larger impact. Fachey moved, seconded by Zog, to finance the $3,000 marketing co-op program from the economic development budget. Motion passed, 11-1. Roberts voting no. Kapitski provided business updates. Bella Salon, formerly located at 312 Wolf River Plaza, has relocated to 511 South Pearl. Blue Gorilla Lounge, formerly located at 309 West Northwater Street, moved into a home setting upon open, moved into a home setting, opening a vacancy at that location. Earl &amp; Clark Law Office, 105 East Opaquah Street, is in the process of closing due to the death of a partner at that business. Fox Community's Credit Union, located at 1302 North Shawno Street, has completed an internal remodeling project and has an open house planned for June 30th. The chamber has created a flyer slash campaign to promote consumer patience and kindness at businesses who are struggling with filling an open position and satisfying orders due to the lack of supplies. Downtown vacancy updates, North Power Street has 25 commercial buildings with three open. Northwater Street has 43 commercial buildings with two open. City Administrator's report, Horst reported that the city staff's been working with consultants on the creations of two TIT districts in the city. One for the downtown riverfront development and another for residential development at the corner of Oskoche Street and Beckett Road. Fox Valley Cab has submitted an application for a taxi permit. And video producer Casey Zumpel and his family have decided to move out of state and submitted his resignation effective June 24th. The city will be opening up the position for replacement in the near future. The committee reviewed speakers and agenda items for future meetings. Public input, Jeff Hanskey asked questions about the residential development on Beckett Road and a potential subsidy for proposed road extension. The next committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 27th, 2021, at 4:30. Thompson's Aug moved to adjourn at 5:31, carried by all. Got the WCEDC monthly report, as is in your packet, and that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Moving on to minutes and reports, them are distributed and stand as read in your packets. Then we'll move on to reports of officers and recent events announcements to the public. We'll start off with the mayor's report, and we will start with the appointments to Library Museum Board, and that appointment would be Betty Roberts and Steve Hart, and I need a motion and a second for that.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dorsey, a seconded by Mr. Zog. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero. Thank you, council. All right, appointments to Tourism Commission will stand as presented. We do not need a motion for that. A citizen appointment to the Joint Review Board, we do not need a motion for that, and I appoint Christie Dorsey. Appointment of Director of Park and Recreation, pending offer, offer letter, and that appointment is Mr. Luke Hammond.
Well, that, no.
Ginger.
No.
Where am I at?
Actually, Ginger.
Oh, yeah. That appointment is Ginger, I'm sorry. All right, we're looking for a motion on that one.
Second.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Mr. BSA.
Wake up.
Motion carried by all. Sorry, Ginger, I messed that one up. Ginger's in the back in, in our, um, behind the scenes in our video room. So we'll move on to number five, appointment of interim Director of Public Works, pending offer letter and negotiation, Mr. Luke Hammons.
So moved.
Second. Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all, and Mr. Luke is front and center in the back of the room. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, council. I would also like to lead out with meet your mayor. This Thursday, July 15th, six to seven, I'll be there to take your questions and answers. Try to answer your questions, here it is here.
Where's this?
This is at New London Senior Center.
Oh.
In the south. South entrance.
Washington Center.
Washington Center.
Dickinson.
What's that?
At Dickinson Street?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And that is all I have. Move on to city administrator, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, in the Recreation Department, uh, we're inviting the public on a bird search. The Wolf River Art League has designed 21 wooden birds. You might have seen them all over in our city parks currently. Um, you can point your camera at the QR code for the bird and find fun facts from the New London Public Museum about the birds in their virtual exhibit. We also have a birding trivia contest available that you can pick up at the Parks and Rec Department, um, or on our website. You can fill out those answers and be eligible to win a backyard bird paradise. Winners can be chosen this fall, and the funding for the project was paid through from a grant that Ginger acquired from the Bird City Wisconsin Organization. Tomorrow, the Aquatics and Fitness Center staff will be hosting our annual water carnival with games, concession stand, and a lot of prizes. The event will be held from 1:15 to 3:30. Um, the Recreation Department, also along with the Police and Fire Departments, are planning our annual National Night Out event that's scheduled for Tuesday, August 3rd, from 4:30 to 6:30 here at the Municipal Building. It'll be between the Municipal Building and the Police Department. There'll be games, giveaways, and our touch truck program, where we have fire trucks, construction equipment, and other specialized equipment on display for the children to climb in, and you can get your picture, um, taken with those, those children. And then lastly, I just want to touch base on the construction of Warner Allen that continues, and we just want to remind people that they can still access brush in the compost drop-off site that's behind the wastewater treatment plant. You just need to drive through the Municipal Garage Campus. We get a lot of phone calls on that because Warner Allen is shut down. So just straight across from Johnny's little bait shop, little shop of bait off of Wolf River Avenue, you can drive through the Municipal Garage entrance and get back to, to the drop-off site. Um, and I do have one last thing. I do want to congratulate Ginger and Luke on their new appointments. They're going to be great assets to the city, and I look forward to working with both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. All right, we'll move on to the utility manager, Mr. Basset. I do not see him in the audience. Anybody have a report from him? All right, then we'll continue to move on to the chief of police, Mr. Schleeder. Well, we'll skip down and go to the fire chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just a couple of things. Um, our new brush unit, uh, truck, uh, has been shoved back as far as the build approximately another month, so, uh, GM, um, is having some trouble getting some parts and things. So we were expecting that truck, you know, middle of August, first part of September, that's probably going to be put back about a month. Um, the other thing, I don't know if anybody noticed last night, but, uh, we had our meeting and, uh, Thea Star landed on our platform, so we did some training with Thea Star last night. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you, chief. Uh, we'll circle back to chief of police.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we had two anniversaries running glow, six years, Todd Sears, and 20 years. Then I also just wanted to reach out to the citizens of New London. Some of you saw last week a YouTube video that came out, uh, where a female from a couple hours from here came up here as they tried to lure someone into a situation where maybe they were trying to connect with a younger female, uh, over the internet. We would like to, we are investigating that case. We are taking care of it. We knew about it before the video was even put out, but I'd like to recommend to our citizens that you don't ever try to confront a person or a suspect of something in a case like that without contacting us. Please get us involved right away. Uh, don't ever try to do the investigation by yourself. That actually assists us in making sure that the investigation's done properly and that we can make sure to get the conviction if the person is doing something wrong. So if you suspect someone is doing something wrong or criminal, please contact us right away. Uh, we may be able to work with you depending on what it is, but at least that way we can kind of take control of it and make sure that we respect everyone's rights. We respect that there's no entrapment or anything like that, but the case is being handled. We've been in contact with the district attorney about it, and we'll move forward with what we can with it, but right now it's a pending case, so I can't go into much more detail, but, uh, please take that into consideration whenever you think you're going to go and do something on your own. It's just, it's just not a safe situation depending on who you're confronting. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And moving on, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, we're adjourned.